Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council meeting of Monday, May 11, 2015. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in saying the pledge.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Second item up is citizen comments. And I just don't think we're going to have any tonight since we don't have anybody here. So hopefully you're all watching at home. Next item, public hearings and presentations. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. First up is National Public Works Week. This is a proclamation, whereas public work services provided in our community are an essential part of our citizens' everyday lives and where and the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems that includes stormwater quality, GIS engineering, water and wastewater services, street preservation, traffic control, and solid waste collection. And the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the dedicated efforts and skills of public works personnel. And this year's theme, "Community Begins Here," is about the quality of life brought to communities around the world. Now therefore, the Lewiston City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 17, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the city of Lewiston, and we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Mr. Davies, would you like to accept this proclamation?
Truly appreciated. I have a few words, or I do?
Okay. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mayor, City Council. On behalf of the public work staff and myself, it is truly appreciated. And we'd also like to invite you, the citizens of Lewiston, and all the staff at the city to come out to Public Works Week Day at County Fairgrounds on May 20 between 10 and 2:00 PM. And you're all invited. We have a great display. I believe this is our fifth or sixth year. And we also include the city of Clarkston, Nesburris County, and Assotin County also will be there assisting us during this week. And from our humble beginnings when we first started, I think now we have registered with kids that come through. We have close to 400 children that come through during that day. And when we first started, I think we had about 50 people come through on them. So it's grown and it's really great. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Okay. Second proclamation. This is EMS Week proclamation. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, the City Council of Lewiston, Idaho, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim May 17 to 23, 2015, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Chief?
Thank you, sir. Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, truly on behalf of all the EMS providers, both career and volunteers in our area, we want to thank you for this proclamation. Truly, it's a team approach, and we couldn't do this if not for all of our responders out there. EMS is a big part of what we do in the fire service nationwide today. It accounts for a large percentage of our calls and continues to grow with our aging population. Truly though, some people I don't want to miss out that we tend to forget a little bit with EMS is our 911 dispatchers. They are the first point of contact that the citizens access to, and they gather that vital information, give some lifesaving skills over the phone, and truly are vital parts. So on behalf of them and the men and women of the Lewiston Fire Department, thank you for this proclamation.
You bet. Thank you, Chief. Okay, now I'll move to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to read the consent agenda unless anybody has something they want to move. Counsel Randall.
I move that we read the consent agenda.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the minutes of the April 27, 2015 budget work session. Approving Resolution 2015-26 by title only. A resolution authorizing the destruction of miscellaneous financial records for the fiscal years 1998 through 2008 and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2015-29 by title only. A resolution authorizing the destruction of Lewiston Police Department records from the year 2003, except the 2003 records specified to be retained and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable dated April 10, 2015 through April 23, 2015, in the amount of $1,282,451.05.
Okay, councilors, the consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll move on to the active agenda. First up is ordinance 4628, possible third reading and adoption. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4628 for the third time by title only suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4628 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending Chapter 4 of the Lewiston City Code entitled "Air Pollution," Sections 4-1, 4-3, 4-4, and 4-11, providing for certain open and outside burning within the city limits, providing responsibility for air quality alerts, prohibiting certain open burning, providing for definitions, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4628 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4628 by roll call vote.
So moved. Second. Roll call.
Motion's been made and seconded. Start down here, or?
Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counsel Blakie.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counsel Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. Next ordinance, 4629, potential third reading and adoption. I'll entertain a motion to read for the third time ordinance 4629 by title only suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Approving the third reading of ordinance 4629 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 14-000001, declaring that certain real property be removed from the medium-density residential zone R3 and included in the general commercial zone C4, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4629 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4629 by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counsel Blakie.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counsel Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Next item, ordinance 4627 for potential second reading. Before we get going, Mr. Bennett?
Sir?
This was something that we had tabled some time ago.
Correct. The discussion that the council had in this matter, I believe, was to consider the second reading, and if this ordinance did not receive a second reading, then we would move on to the other ordinance that had been drafted by the city attorney. And this ordinance wouldn't, in essence, be...
Null and void.
Null and void, but I will defer to the city attorney.
As per if you deny the second reading, the ordinance effectively dies.
Everybody clear on that? Okay. So then I guess I'd entertain a motion to read ordinance 4627 for the second time. Seeing none. Motion fails, for lack of a...
Motion.
Motion and second. We will be addressing this again, though, to clear up concerns that we all had. Correct?
Correct.
Excuse me. Okay, next, item D, ordinance 4632, potential first reading. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4632 for the first time.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4632 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code Section 1-7, changing the general penalty for violations of the city code or city ordinances and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Kerry. Next up is our reason statement on CPA 15-000001 and ZNC/PUD 15-00001. Entertain a motion to approve the reason statement.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Randall.
Even though the city attorney is under the opinion that full council doesn't mean that it requires the full council to have voted to approve the consolidation of some ordinances later on which apply to this, because this applies to that ordinance, I'm going to have to vote no on that and the ordinance later on.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the reason statement? Do I have to give a reason for the reason statement? Or we're just approving?
You could just approve what's written. This will be in the minutes.
Okay. We clear on that? Okay. So all those in favor of approving the reason statement for the comp plan amendment and zone change on PUD, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries six to one. Next item is ordinance 4633. I'll entertain a motion for the first, second, and third readings, possible adoption of ordinance 4633.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Oh, by title only suspending the rules. Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Just one comment I've got to make. This is in regards to the annexation of land on the north side of Warner between 15th and 16th Avenue, so everybody's aware of that. Okay, all those in... All those in favor, by roll call vote.
No, we're on the reading.
Roll calls is for adoption.
Thank you. Roll calls for adoption. We're on the reading. All those in favor of reading ordinance 4633? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries six to one.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4633 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ANX 15-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston city limits and providing an effective date. Approving the second reading of ordinance 4633 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ANX 15-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston city limits and providing an effective date. Approving the third reading of ordinance 4633 by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ANX 15-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston city limits and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, the ordinance 4633 has been read for the first, second, and third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry. Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counsel Blakie.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counsel Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Nay.
Okay, that motion passes six to one. Thank you. Next item, G. This is Resolution 2015-31. This is implementing the council's decision on comprehensive plan amendment 1501, amending neighborhood six. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2015-31.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries six to one. And now on to ordinance 4635 for potential first, second, and third reading. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4635 for the first, second, and third times by title only suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries six to one.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4635 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC/PUD 15-000001 declaring that certain real property be removed from the F1 Farm, R1 Suburban Residential, and the R2A Low Density Residential Zones and included in the planned unit development PUD Zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date. Approving the second reading of ordinance 4635 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC/PUD 15-000001 declaring that certain real property be removed from the F1 Farm, R1 Suburban Residential, and the R2A Low Density Residential Zones and included in the planned unit development PUD Zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date. And approving the third reading of ordinance 4635 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC/PUD 15-000001 declaring that certain real property be removed from the F1 Farm, R1 Suburban Residential, and the R2A Low Density Residential Zones and included in the planned unit development PUD Zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4635 has been read for the first, second, and third times. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4635 by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor, have a comment?
Counsel Daniel.
Normally, I'd be opposed to doing a first, second, and third reading. The only reason I'm in support of this and the previous one is all parties that are directly impacted by this are in favor of it, and that's why I voted yes, and I'll vote yes for the adoption.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Okay.
Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counsel Blakie.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counsel Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries six to one. And last but not least, another resolution. Resolution 2015-34 approving an agreement between the city, DK Holdings, Lewiston Orchard's Irrigation District, providing a planned unit development agreement for Northeast Crossing. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2015-34.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Because this is a resolution to enter into a contract, it should also be done by roll call vote.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Jesus.
Oh, roll call, by roll call vote. Thank you.
Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counsel Blakie.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counsel Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries six to one. Next item is vouchers payable to Albertson's from 41015 through 42315 in the amount of $14.17. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertson's with Counselor Daniel standing.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries six, zero, to one. Well, that concludes our active agenda. We'll move on to unfinished and new business, city council comments. Do we have any comments this evening? Counsel Blakie.
Just three quick items. Noon tomorrow at City Hall is URA meeting. It will be streamed live for you all at home, but if you have an opportunity to come to the meeting, it's always good to get public input at those meetings. Second, Mr. Bennett, I know it's not mandatory, but is it possible that we make sure we have some police representation at these meetings just because?
Normally, we do.
Yeah. We don't today, and I just wondered, that's all.
Correct. I'll make a point of that.
Yeah. And last but least, and maybe you're going to comment on the memorial service tomorrow?
Oh, thank you for reminding me.
Okay, I'll let you do that.
Okay. Any other comments? I've got a few. Yes, to follow up on Counsel Blakie, there's a ceremony down at Reddick Park, which is across from City Hall to the east, the police memorial. It starts at 10:00 AM. It's to recognize fallen police officers and kind of hits close to home since we just had a police officer slain in the line of duty up in Coeur d'Alene just in the recent past. So if you can make it, I know the force would sure appreciate it. On a lighter note, about three weeks ago, we had a proclamation declaring May 8 as Music Teacher Appreciation Day. And as a recipient of that, Lynn Cook, Skinny Lynn Cook, as you know, was able to organize a jazz concert at Lewiston High School Saturday night, just the other day. And it was great. I was asked to, I didn't have to read the proclamation again, which is good, but the attendance was really good. The kids got up. The jazz band is kind of a fundraiser for them, and it also, people brought food for the food bank at the high school. And they ran out of room in two garbage bins real quick, which was nice. They raised a bunch of money for the jazz band to go down to Disneyland next year. But the real highlight of the evening was the alumni jazz orchestra put together by Lynn, not on a moment's notice, but on kind of a short notice. And there were over 35 individuals, graduates of Lewiston High, that had played for Eddie Williams over the years. Some of those bands actually got to go to Europe on tour. Went to the International Jazz Festival in Reno several times, won many awards. And these people with two hours of practice on Saturday morning really put on a show. It was quite incredible. So hopefully, they'll be able to pull it off again next year. People that didn't get a chance to see it this last time, it was something else. So that's all I've got. Mr. Bennett? Just a couple of items. On Wednesday evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting here at Lewis-Clark State College. One of the items on their agenda will be to discuss the draft ordinance regarding the permitting of backyard poultry in other zoning districts of the city. So if there are interested parties, members of the public who'd like to attend and review that and comment, they're certainly welcome to do that. Also, there will be no second council meeting in May. That is Memorial Day, therefore, there won't be a meeting that day. So the next time the council will meet will be on June 1, which is a Monday. We will meet at 3:00, first with a joint shared programs meeting with Nesburris County Commissioners to review our budgets for those programs, followed by a work session at City Hall, which will start at 5:00. Our first council meeting will be on June 8 here at LC. And we have a budget session that afternoon also. Correct. We also have our next budget session at 3:00 at City Hall on June 8 as well. Yeah, I would encourage people, if you want to see how the budget process works, we had a budget session today, and we'll have another one on June 8 at the back chambers at City Hall. Anything else, Mr. Bennett? No, that's all, sir. Okay. Advisory board commission appointments? Do we have any this evening? Still lacking people on solid waste?
Yes, three positions.
Three positions now on solid waste. If anybody's interested in being involved with the solid waste advisory commission, please contact Kerry. I think urban forestry is filled. TAC is back up to full strength, I believe.
It is, but there'll be an opening after June 3.
Okay. So we'll bring that up next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we're still looking for somebody for emergency medical services.
Oh, for the MSAB?
Yes.
So, yes, we're still...
Library.
And the library board or foundation board?
Library board.
Library board. So we have openings, there's several openings on different committees if people want to get involved. The MSAB board, library board?
I'll just comment quick.
Certainly.
Mr. Davies? Has Mr. Young been extended an invitation to be on the Stormwater Sewer Committee?
Counselor, he has not.
He's a sitting duck.
You might, we got him trapped. I don't know.
He's a sitting duck. You can get him before he leaves.
So don't let him out of the building?
Yeah. Tackle him.
Thank you, Counsel Blakie. Future work session agenda topics, do we have any for the next meeting? I think it's going to have to be a little bit short. There is a county public hearing after our next work session on the first, so we'll try to keep that one short, catch up in July. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. RE records exempt from disclosure and acquisition of property under Idaho Code Section 67-2345 in Pran 1, Pran D, and Pran C.
So moved by roll call. By roll call.
Do we have to do this by roll call?
Yes.
By roll call.
Second.
So we had a motion and a second, so...
Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counsel Blakie.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counsel Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Why don't we take a three-minute break? Thank you, everybody.